Item two on discussions is short-term rental ordinance amendment. Points of concern from the city council discussion concerning the amendment to the short-term rental zoning ordinance, Mr. Van Nooy.
All right. So we have been drilling down. Each time we take a step forward, we just ask a few more questions to make sure that we are clarified and that we're all looking at this the same way. So on this first one up here, we talked about remove the reference to a license in those RS and RNE areas. Those are the ones that would be required a conditional use. So we're looking at commercial properties. They currently would not have the requirement for conditional use or a technical, what we would call a license, if you will. But there are certain processes already in place for a change of occupancy and an annual inspection. So if the property's going from mercantile and they're going to have a short-term rental, that's where our building department does a change of occupancy. They look at certain things on that floor plan. They go out and they do inspections, and then the fire marshal has annual inspections for those. And so we just wanted to clarify that, that there are some, there are oversights in the commercial area. We don't want things, people to think that, oh, well, you can just pop up an STR wherever you want to. There may be some processes that you have to go through. During those processes, it's an internal process, but we will make sure that city staff are communicating with that potential STR, then you must register to pay your hotel occupancy taxes to get over to our local finance department here.
Yeah.
Get registered with them to do that on a, I think it's a quarterly basis. It might be every other month. I just don't remember. So we still have the rewording of the expiration. We still have the short-term rental 500 feet in those RS and RNE districts and certain planned development zoning districts if they have a residential base zoning. This one would be about the schools. And I've got some more for that, just some visual imaging for that and a question at the end for, about the schools specifically when it comes to commercial, but we'll talk about that in just a moment. We did, we still have the clarified process and requirements and a shortened appeal period. And then the checklist that the building official, building team has come up with for checking those things every year in the residential areas. And then the standard requirements that have been kind of eliminated throughout the state through different court cases, we'll be moving away from those as well as the limits on outside gatherings and the 30 feet of pavement width. So you've all heard most of those before. That's really not new information. We've kind of been discussing that for the last probably four months or so. So now I've got some imaging just to kind of talk about. So this is north Chadburn. You see Grape Creek Road up there and Grape Creek Road at the bottom and North Fortieth. You can see that the green area is general commercial. And you see the property at 4003 and 4007. And I may see if I can get this right here. Two residential style structures. This one has a conditional use for residential, to stay, for people to stay there, long-term rentals. This one has had a short-term rental in the past. It may be expired. I'd have to check just our list to see. But their intent is to, when, if and when the ordinance goes through, that these two properties become short-term rentals together. The Coliseum's just off to the northeast. They get lots and lots of traffic during any kind of Coliseum activities. Our ordinance is, would move to allow that because those are both in commercial districts. So they can be within the 500 feet of each other. So I wanted to give that as a visual representation, that that is not an issue. That, and then there'd be other processes that would deal with that if they needed a change of occupancy under the building code. They would then go to the building officials team and they would go through that and do those things. Currently, our ordinance does not allow that. And if we think about short-term rentals as hotels, well, we're certainly not going to tell a hotel at 4003 to say, you can't build there because there's a short-term rental at 4007. That's not going to take place. So that's why we're, our justification, one thing is, let's allow these short-term rentals in these commercial areas. This one, just kind of a really good map. And I also want to say, thank Austin Reed for putting these maps together. He's done a great job of coming in and helping us visually kind of understand some things. And I think that, that really makes a difference. So here we have, on the right side is RS2. So that is an RS district. And so we would have that 500-foot separation. On the left, as you can see, is the RM and then some office commercial and general commercial up there at the top. Well, the red property, that's, is a short-term rental. So on the left side of the screen, you could have multiple short-term rentals within 500 feet. On the right side of the screen, you could only have them within 500 feet and they'd have to have the conditional use. So that's just one of the representations. Of course, as we move this, keep moving this forward to city council, and we want to make sure they can see what it is that we're actually trying to look at.
Yeah, before you go, come back.
No, no, let's move on.
So this is, this is an RM-zoned area that was developed as single-family? Is that correct?
It does look, it does appear that way, that there is a lot of single-family structures in that area. It is zoned, low-rise multifamily, which allows all the way from single-family to multifamily.
Yes.
Usually the lots are more narrow. Usually it's more dense and there can be more properties through there.
Okay.
So my question, sorry to bring this kind of back up again, but remind me sort of RM, the intention of the 500 feet. I mean, just obviously to not have a whole neighborhood full of short-term rentals. I mean, it's just basically, so, and this is really probably a question for you. Has this, is this something that other cities are doing? Is it something that has been blessed? Have we seen this brought up in court cases?
So I think we're actually maybe the only city doing distance limitations. I think most are going to like a percentage of neighborhoods. And we actually brought that up in a, like a training. And of all the people there, yeah, we were the only ones doing the limits. As far as court cases, the biggest one I can think of talked about limiting the number of licenses that you would issue. And I think that's kind of what we're doing, but I don't think they addressed distance limitations specifically.
And my question stems from kind of like what Trinidad said earlier. I've had a couple of people come and ask, like, well, how do, how do you, how do you figure that? And I can see in what the city council brought up, it's conveying to people how that's being measured and that kind of thing. But I think we discussed this already too, with the issue with, if you're 500 feet from me and I'm denied because of only that distance, then what does that look like for the renewal process if you're not, I mean, right? And so I guess maybe I'm just sort of, this 500 feet thing has, has me a little, got a little worried about it.
The 500 feet thing is...
I understand the intention, but I wanted to make sure I did understand the intention.
Yeah. The 500 feet restriction, which is why city staff kind of initially said, we would recommend against that.
Right.
It is very dependent on enforcement and staff-heavy.
Right, yeah.
And that is very challenging to do unless you have lots of complaints. And we have not had that historically so far. And so, you know, all because there's this imaginary zoning line that says, okay, well, your RS zoning and your RM zoning, we're saying, well, RM zoning historically has been more dense and would allow more movement of people in and out, where a single-family residential is just those families coming in and out. And trying to limit or protect those single-family homes in some way of having that 500-foot buffer.
Right.
Where over here, you could have three or four in a row and would not be an issue, but you couldn't have that in the RS zoning districts or the RNE.
Erin, just to clarify on that, so the ones where you, on a, where you can have multis right beside each other, that 500-foot does not extend over into the other zoning? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that wouldn't affect, just to make it clear.
You could have one across the street.
If you put a circle around that red block, whatever goes into the pink area doesn't affect someone in the pink area from having a spot right beside them. It doesn't overlap. And that could get confusing, but I think that was the intent, because if it overlaps, it's unfair to one or the other, because you have multiple in the yellow that would affect one.
And I think, one of the questions I was asked was, well, if there's one 500 feet, so I buy this property, I decide I'm going to request a conditional use, and I can, I'm told that there's one 500 feet away. Does that completely deny my ability to apply? See, and that's where I think we have the trouble with the renewal process or the process of kind of, as you mentioned, you know, enforcement is. So that means I, I'm denied, basically, the ability to use my property as I want, as I see fit, based on somebody else complying with rules, right? And how am I notified, like, how am I notified that this person is or isn't renewing? I mean, do I just have to, I guess I'm just thinking this sounds really, really messy.
I agree with you, but to try to do the renewal process once, at the same time every year.
Yeah, that's part of the changes.
So that would help in that situation.
Right. And I remember us talking about that a little bit.
Yeah, and I think...
But it still doesn't solve it completely, but it helps. That way, your staff at that one time, as well as, you should have a pretty good list of what's already out there. They're going to renew in January, whatever.
And I guess, my other question to that is, so if I can't apply, so say I'm denied, I see that one is, you know, have one 500 feet, right? So I don't even have an application to submit, so I can't appeal being denied, right?
Right. The plus side about it being once a year, the same time on the application renewal, is you should be able to say, okay, there's already one here.
But what I'm thinking...
I shouldn't buy this house to do it. You know what I'm saying?
Well, yes, right.
And that's been the problem. They ought to not realize that it was longer than five.
But the other issue with that is the, I'm going to use the term license, although that's not our client. The approval, right, is only one portion of complying with the regulation.
Correct.
So just because I have one 500 feet away that has been quote approved and they're due for...
Does it mean it's being operated?
Exactly. And that's, that's the part that I think is unfair, is that where do you...
And that's where we changed our stuff, that we could revoke that license.
Okay.
If they're not showing that they're actively using it as a short-term rental and paying those hotel occupancy taxes. There's other reasons to revoke, but that's one of the reasons. Now, again, that's enforcement-heavy.
Right.
That's enforcement-heavy. It's, it's very challenging to do that. But so far, that's our direction from what our community, what we're thinking our community will want and live with. And that's the challenge of trying to figure that out, to put that blanket out there on the entire community of what is this going, how is this going to affect those properties?
But it would really be me as the person who says, this person 500 feet away, I as the property owner, would have to come, probably do my homework and make that complaint. And then, I mean, gosh, nice.
Erin, has there been a study as to eliminate the 500 and go back to the percentages? I mean, I know we started with the 500 and there was probably very good reason, very good thoughts. But is it time to relook based on what we know today? Or have we decided that this is the road we're going to stay on? But, you know, to the point that you're bringing, it's, you know, they're excellent points. Are we doing the right thing is the question I'm asking.
Well, I can just talk to that a second, because I was on the committee that sat and deliberated to begin with STRs. And the 500 feet came in major discussion mainly from Nazworthy and party houses.
Right.
On the lake. And the neighbors just were in hysterical arms about that. And so they didn't want them next door and three on the same street and that kind of thing. And that's where putting a 500 feet, now I can't remember exactly why we came up with 500 and not 300 or whatever, but that's where that conversation came from in the very beginning of the STR guidelines. So whether we can talk to it or not would be up to us to ask the council to make changes to that if that's what we prefer to do.
Well, and Candy, to that point, sorry Travis.
No, go ahead.
What, I guess, so this is another thought, in my opinion. So the gentleman today and this young man that both of you guys that talked about, I mean, I'm not pro or anti or anything. I think it is a case-by-case basis, right? But that 500 feet limits that case-by-case basis. And there's also a process for, if you have three on the same street, that's when you fill this room, like we've seen multiple times, of the neighborhood saying, we don't want that. I mean, do you get what I'm saying? I think you're...
I do.
That's what makes me nervous. And the thing is too, is there are neighborhoods out by the Coliseum or by Angelo State that probably, the neighborhoods would benefit from investors like we saw today coming in and making those properties better too. So I guess I just, I see the point of it. And again, I'm new here and as I'm sitting here and learning more and whatnot, I'm starting to kind of say, whoa, 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 because I, I get, there is a process for saying, we don't want that short-term rental in our neighborhood. So to me, it's, you put it on your, you put it on the neighborhood to speak up and say, this is our expectation versus the city limiting someone's use of their private property.
The, the opposition to short-term rentals, and to Candy's point, during those discussions, a lot of late Nazworthy folks had, had very loud voices in that discussion. But it's not just late Nazworthy. There, there are other parts of the community, other citizens. And one of the big arguments that they make is that short-term rentals are a business. It's a going concern. It's different than a long-term rental. And you're putting businesses in our neighborhoods that are supposed to be residences. You're eroding the, the beauty and the character of our neighborhoods by allowing these businesses to come in. Personally, what I've seen with short-term rentals is largely good. It's an investment in properties that are, that are typically dilapidated and need some work. As I've said before, a short-term rental's not going to rent unless it looks good. It has to be furnished. You've got people that are going into these residences on a regular basis so that the improvements are maintained to a high standard. Personally, I'd rather have a short-term rental as a next-door neighbor than a long-term rental. But I also understand the opposition within our community. And I guess I'm kind of hopeful that in time, after seeing years of operating history and, and as Trinidad said, you know, we haven't had, we don't have a lot of folks come in and complain about the short-term rental down the street that they were upset about that we approved. We don't have people coming in and saying they're keg parties at the short-term rental. We need to, we need to revoke the license. So I agree with you that it's, that may not be considered really fair to put a 500 limit.
But I see why. I mean, I, again, I...
Yeah, I mean, I...
When we have the yellow, we don't have a 500.
We do not. And that, that was the, the other point I wanted to clarify with Erin. So the ordinance that we've written and that you're proposing to the city council is really restrictive on the, the single-family RS zoning designations. There are no commercial zoning designations that are part of this short-term policy.
Except for zone change.
That, I would say that's correct. Now, when we get to schools, there'll be a question about schools versus commercial. But as this slide would represent, if you're in RM1, RM2, or a commercial district, we would not require the conditional use process. Where if you're in the RS districts or RNE, you would go through the conditional use process that gives that annual review.
Yeah.
Right now, it would be, it would transition to staff unless staff says, there's a reason to revoke this, let's bring that to planning commission. And then citizens have that come and say, no, no, we've had these issues, multiple issues, and that's part of the review that staff does to bring that forward you as a, let's, let's look at this one for revocation or not.
So I agree with this, this idea that we exclude commercial because in, in any aspect where you have commercial zoning that allows a hotel, how could you restrict short-term rentals any differently?
Yeah. Well, and like this slide, the yellow's closer to downtown, which is getting closer to business. That's understandable. That's your buffer zone in between a residential.
Right.
Or a full-fledged residence. So I don't have a problem even with that, that scenario, you know?
Yep.
Out of curiosity, Brandon, on the, the call or the meeting that you guys attended, and they were looking at a percentage base, how wide was the vicinity of, you know, like, was it a mile radius or was it like broken down by, how was that broken down?
Ray may need your help on this one, because she actually attended that meeting and brought it back to, to us for discussion. But, I mean, it was by neighborhood, I think. But how did they determine what the neighborhood?
Yeah, it was by neighborhood. They, whatever the city decided as a neighborhood, they then looked at the total number of houses that they had and then did a percentage, like 30% is allowed.
So I didn't know if it would be, because San, like, for instance, Santa Rita's such a big area, but if it made more sense, like, if you were to look at it as a percentage base, to break it down by addition, you know, because that addition is obviously a much smaller percentage than the general neighborhood.
Maybe as an idea, can you go back to my slide of one of the neighborhoods? Just, okay.
So, I'm going to go back to her.
Like the, the one example that you love.
Like this, the Fort Concho.
Or Fort Concho.
Yeah, Fort Concho.
Massive.
There's lots of real estate into there. The challenge with the, the more percentage-wise, there's, there's two things. One, what if somebody decided to buy up a lot, a block? And then that's entirely, now, now you've got them concentrated, but maybe that's just one area. Maybe that's okay. Then the other thing is, the city does not have great enforcement ability right now with short-term rentals.
Right.
That's going to increase that responsibility to do that. I'm not saying that's not bad or wrong. We just don't have the abilities to do that now. And so I'm not sure, without going to a broader neighborhood, how do we choose that percentage? Yeah. Because what if as an addition is six lots? What does that mean? They only get one? But then the one behind them's 200 lots?
Right.
Yeah.
It's challenging. I mean, any way you slice it, it's challenging. And going back to Trinidad, Trinidad's question about, what is the, the evidence is telling us cities all over the state are doing different things. There are some cities that have zero short-term rules and as far as we know, they don't have a lot of issues. Maybe they do. There's others that have said, hey, we're going to ban them completely. And then they're getting lots and lots of lawsuits, which will probably get overturned at some point. Because there's a number of the courts that say that a short-term rental is a residential use and should be allowed in residential areas. And so we're trying to hit that balance somewhere through some of these updates, trying to make it a little easier, because we see some benefits from our short-term rentals for sure, but we also know that it can impact our residential areas. Yeah, see if I can get us back to, sorry. No, that's, good suggestion though. That, that's a good visual. All right, so the next item. So this is a very busy map. I know it's all of our, our community. We're trying to figure out, how do we show this in an easier format? So the red circles, blotches, whatever you want to call them, those are short-term rentals with their 500-foot buffer. Then you see the blue ones, those are schools with a 500-foot buffer. The red are the RS districts and the green is anything besides an RS district. So you can see some areas that if we move forward with the schools also having the 500-foot buffer, particularly in commercial areas, then you're going to restrict some commercial properties from having a potential short-term rental. I think it makes a lot of sense in our neighborhood schools that children are walking to homes. That makes a lot of sense. But what we're also saying in the commercial areas is if there's a 500-foot buffer, we are not treating hotels that way, because they also don't do background checks on who stays at their hotels. But we're going to say, if you have a short-term rental, we're, we're kind of have that, maybe at that expectation. And I'm not saying they have to do background checks, so don't, don't misunderstand. But I think Austin did me one that's, this is just in the downtown area. We were just looking. We know up in this area, there's a number of residences and apartments up in this area. Well, there's freshman campus, there's Ambleside, and then there's a school here at one of the churches that's still classified as a school. Excuse me. Well, you see the 500-foot buffer. Obviously, the pink in there is Shannon. But that would, then we have all that green area. And the question is, do we look at schools in commercial zoned areas the same as we do for RS zoned areas? Do we keep that 500-foot? Is that our recommendation to move forward to city council? My, our staff's recommendation would be no.
I don't know how you can do that.
Yeah, I can't. I mean, if we're taking the, if we're taking the stance, for lack of a word, that you could put a hotel there and...
Yeah. Are you going to tell me I can put a hotel on one of these lots, but not a short-term rental? What's the difference?
Yeah.
This whole area we're looking at downtown could be any of that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think you're, I think the other issue with that is, I mean, if I, you said this is, this is by Shannon, right? Where I'm thinking, like, central freshman campus, right?
Yeah, I believe that property's Shannon.
Yeah, I mean, think about...
This is the cactus right there for reference, if you need, I mean, that's the cactus.
Think about this servet, I mean, how many people do we know that in terms of short-term rentals are looking at nurses, I mean, and, and that's crime? I, yeah, I don't think you can do that.
Well, you see, we already have one right there that's a short-term rental. That I know nursing and/or doctors or others that read that out.
And again, I also think you, I think those areas that are commercial use are, that's what we're promoting, I mean, from any kind of like development standpoint too, I'm assuming. So, yeah, no.
And I'll go back to the big overview.
So do we collectively agree to exclude the 500-foot rule from commercial?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. What other questions do you have, Erin?
I'm hoping none. The real question is, what other questions? Do you guys, do you all feel comfortable moving forward with what we're going to potentially propose? Is this is our ordinance moving forward? We're going to, we're scheduled to have a discussion.
Given where we are as a community, I think, yeah, I am.
Next Tuesday at council?
At council. It'll just be a discussion. It will not be the ordinance hearing. It will just be a discussion. We will probably ask for a month later, so that'd probably be that first meeting in April, that we'd actually have a, potentially a joint meeting, which we'd have to have if we need to hear this ordinance as a joint meeting. So I don't have the calendar in front of me, but it'd be the first Tuesday in April. That, that's kind of what we'd be looking at, is having a joint meeting. That gives enough time for staff to notify folks, to put it out in the paper, so that our community knows that this is going to have, be an ordinance heard.
Okay.
I know there are two short-term rental folks here. I don't know if you want to open it up for public comment just to see what they have to say, because I know that they do operate. And of course, the gentleman's just getting ready to start operating, so we'd like to hear their comments too, if that's all right with you, Chad.
All right. I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Jesse McMillan. My construction company is Elevated Developments. Hopefully y'all be seeing that come to y'all pretty soon too. Our property is the one that's on 224 Bird, right next to Fort Concho. The entire neighborhood is falling apart. All the houses need roofs, they need siding, they need to be redone. They're historic houses, they're gorgeous houses. They just need some love. I would like to do that, but seeing as how we're already in one, it blocks us off from that entire area to do the next, so we'd have to jump to a whole different area. If I could go down the street, because we're two blocks from Twisted Route, you're walking distance to the, to downtown, the River Stage, Rio Concho Manor, Shannon, everything. So if we were able to go down that street and continue to update and bring up that neighborhood, we would love to. That's kind of why we put our feet in that area first.
Sure.
To start there, because we'd like to start getting those properties, knowing that this was a possibility, that this would change. I mean, I know it's all over the place as far as the ruling for that, but that's something that we were wanting to do.
So you would be in favor of removing the 500-foot separation?
Most definitely.
Okay.
Because it would definitely, I mean, in my opinion, I think it would help the neighborhood too, because it's all...
You're going in and cleaning up?
Yes.
Properties that otherwise are just going to sit there.
Yeah. And, and there's, there are a couple that are vacant or for sale or have squatters in them already that I don't know who owns them, but they're not listed for sale. So not sure what the situation is there. But if I could come in and get them and fix them up, I would be more than willing. And eventually, I don't know how to do so. Haven't got to that point in my career yet, but I would love... but I would love to try and acquire or help with the remodel of the downtown area as well, some of the historic buildings and kind of get into that as well. That's kind of where I want to be headed, but this is the stepping stones to that.
Okay.
But that's my opinion on it. There's a lot of different properties that I've seen, or, we stay in short-term rentals all the time, and there's been a couple places where we'll go for a wedding, and we have a big family that travels all at once, and we'll rent four STRs right next to each other. And it's a great experience, because we're all right here, but we've got our own house.
Yes.
In those kinds of situations, it's nice, specifically downtown. But otherwise, yes, I think that removing the 500-foot rule would be good, not necessarily only for me, but for multiple people and neighborhoods specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Doug Robinson with Single Third District 5. So the 500-foot rule, I mean, that's been going on when y'all did it to first. That was just something y'all came up with. That wasn't, okay, 500 feet's going to keep noise away from this other people. That's just, so that's just something that's, and me, I've been affected twice now by the 500-foot rule. First time was when I went to Princeton, went to the city and y'all, and had to take it to the, the board, and they actually said yes. Because I looked at the map, map said that there wasn't anyone there. We bought the property, a month later, they said, oh, it was there. This happened Friday.
Yeah.
Again, this on another property. We started looking for another property, we found a property, a look, and this was after, and, and I'm not, I'm not, not saying bad things about the staff. They're dealing with software from 1996, and none of us want to be on that. But, you know, so we look, we find a property, we look on the map, and we'd heard since then, hey, the map's good, the map is up today, we're good to go, right? Have we all heard that? I've been to come into these, all these meetings. And so I'm like, okay, great. So I get my inspector down there, I get contractors, we're starting to look at it. My last day to do it is on Sunday, we had a seven-day wait or whatever. So I think, you know what, I better go check. I better just check, just to make sure. Go talk to Austin, Austin said, he looks at the map, he goes, I think you're good to go. But I need to check my Excel spreadsheet. I don't have that Excel spreadsheet. Now, this is after I've already spent 600 bucks to get it inspected and everything else. Austin calls me at 2:00, ah, got some bad news. Oh, really, what? Uh, there's one that's 360 feet. What? Yeah, it's not on the map. Apparently there's not five on the map, and that's one of them. So that, I mean, the 500-feet thing, I get it, but really, in all honesty, when I first started doing this, San Angelo was an A-plus market. Now, it's a C-market. This is all going to be supply and demand.
Yeah.
And, and, and that, it's going to all kind of work its way out. And, and I know all the residents here are a little bit nervous about STRs coming in. But the, the thing that scares me the most about what y'all are about to do is the not being able to bring it back up to the 500, or the, if you're going to do the 500 feet, you can't come back and say, hey, why, why, I mean, the zoning board of adjustments, they, they won't be able to hear our things, is that right, Erin? So why? I mean, so I could have bought that house this weekend on y'all's map and done everything right, and then 200, I mean, it was going to cost me 235,000. And I mean, so if that was the case with Princeton and Adams, it would have been nearly a half a million bucks that I would have had on real estate that I wouldn't have been able to come up. Why do we have a zoning board of adjustments if they can't adjust? You know? That's what, that's what my problem is.
Well, that, that would be the ordinance change. And under our ordinance, there's certain things that meet for variance, and there's different criteria that meet for those things. At this time, that's just been the proposal to move forward, is that those things would not be a variable item. As you, as you know, in the past, those things were interpreted by the director as not variable. The ZBA decided to say, no, those could be variable.
Yes.
And we've been in that situation for maybe eight months to a year of those being variable. I could be wrong on the timeline. But that's, I think, the discussions that I've heard is that if there's a 500 feet, it should really be 500 feet. Now, staff has, staff has different feelings about that, but at the same time, we're bringing forward what the, the citizens, what we believe the citizens will, will want.
Right, right. And, and, and you're right, and I think Travis said it best, was, you know, a lot of the citizens, when they first come and they get those things, they're like, oh, I don't want an STR next to me. Well, I've just spent all weekend working at one of ours, and, you know, the people were coming up, and we haven't got it up and going yet, but they were coming up and asking, hey, well, when is this going to come in? Because it's great for my family, they can come stay here, and I'm right down the street.
Yep.
And, and, you know, I don't know, I hate to have things that are especially, if you're going to do the 500 feet. So I've got one that's going to come up hopefully with the zoning board of adjustments, that when I did the, the measurements on it, I was coming up 13 feet from 500 feet. So it was like 487 feet. Well, then I go down and ask Austin, Austin's coming up with, I think it was 518 feet. So, you know, everything's a little bit different. We, and you can't just say, okay, this is it, this, I mean, because 13 feet, so they're going to, I'm not even going to be able to bring it to the zoning board of adjustments on 13 feet? It just doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
You know? And, and, and I've been in here, and I'm paying all my hot taxes. I'm doing that every month, which by the way, I think we need to do what Fredericksburg is doing with the STRs. They're doing the hot tax thing every quarter. So then it frees up y'all's lady accountant down there, you know, instead of doing it every month. But that's just one of the things. But I think that's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this? All right, I'm going to close public comment. Erin, you've got our feedback. Anything else from us?
No, I think that's good, thank you.